All right, at this time entertain a motion to return to open session. All those in favor? We're gonna have a moment of silence and in that moment of silence, please recognize we've lost several of our folks out of our Chesterfield County School District. Please remember them and then we will have the pledge of allegiance after the moment of silence by Cameron Oliver Jefferson Elementary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. All right. I'd like to thank everyone for coming and I appreciate all the administrators, staff, and the SRO for being here. Now, we're gonna have Katie Brune, Coordinator of Testing and Accountability for Special Recognitions.
Good evening, everyone. I have some very exciting achievements to share with you all tonight. We're gonna recognize four of our students who are receiving maximum scores on their SC Ready summative assessment at the end of last school year. So, we're very excited for that. Our first student is Cameron Oliver. She is currently a fourth grader at Jefferson Elementary. And she scored a maximum score on her math SC Ready test. Our next student is Walker Missu. He's a current fifth grader at Plainview Elementary and he scored a perfect score on his ELA SC Ready test. Next is Harper Moss, current fifth grader at Edwards Elementary, who also received this award last year as well. And he scored a perfect score on his fourth grade math SC Ready. And then finally, we have William Smith. He's a current ninth grader at Sheraw High School, but he earned a perfect score on the math SC Ready test last year in eighth grade at Long Middle. Let's give all of these boys and girls a round of applause. And can I have the principals and any teachers that are in the building for these students to come forward? We'll get a picture with y'all as well. Hal Mayer's taking credit for a kid he just got. It's okay. All right, let's give them one more round of applause. Congratulations.
Board members, you've been given the minutes for August the 11th prior to the meeting. If you have no objections, they will be approved by consent. We'll take a break, just two or three minutes for those that would like to leave. Mass Exodus. Thank y'all for coming. All right, at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Ballinger for our presentation from the architects.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to welcome. I would like to welcome everybody in attendance tonight and those joining us live. Thank you for taking an interest in Chesterfield County Schools. Tonight, we would like to present with you from our architects, but also, I wanted to take this opportunity for Mr. Evans to come up and talk a little bit about the process of the selection of the architects, because I know this is the first time that the board is hearing about the architects. And so, we wanted to kind of go through our process and then also give them an opportunity to do a presentation to the board tonight.
Go ahead, Mr. Evans.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Ballinger. About two weeks ago, Dr. Ballinger came to me and asked me would I be interested in presenting to the board the process that we went through to select the architects that I'll introduce you to you shortly. But before I get into that process, I think it's relevant that I kind of update a few board members who are not part of the process, who are new to the board. Back in 2005, the school district adopted its first school procurement code for the district. And that was under the rule or the state law of 1135-5340, which any school district that has operating budget equal to or greater than $75 million must adopt a procurement code that is classified as substantially similar to that of the state. And when I say substantially to the state, it's almost word for word exactly what the state law says. And so, in 2021, the state came out with a updated model procurement code for the school district to utilize, of which the school district in Chesterfield County adopted on December 7th, 2021. That incorporated all the latest and greatest sections that had been updated and upgraded that the state had changed since the earlier versions. So, in doing this, this now brings us to full compliance with all state laws, fair and open competition for processes to ensure public trust and procedures designed to secure the best value for the taxpayers while maintaining calability. Now, one thing I meant to tell you, I provided you a copy of this document that I'm speaking from. I misspoke. I left a copy on your desk, so you'll have this to look at once we're through. And if you have any questions, I'll answer those questions at the end. In developing the solicitation, we met with then Superintendent Dr. Anderson, met with our Facilities Director Jarrett Burr, and Dr. Amaro King to decide the process which we would go through in selecting an architect. Since we had somebody who had the resume of Jarrett Burr, who was our Facilities Director, we decided to go with what's classified as a design bid build. In this process, we'll select an architect and work with them directly in designing the needs of the school district. And then, we would actually bid the project out. This is very similar to the process that we followed when I was with the Lancaster County School District, under the leadership of then Jamie Spears, which we would have somebody equivalent to him and Jarrett Burr in completing those processes. You'll look at your little brief calendar I have there. June 3rd, we issued the solicitation as an RFQ as required under South Carolina law, excuse me, under South Carolina law 1135-3220, which that outlines the qualifications, request for qualifications for engineers and architects. On July 9th, we received seven proposals. That's when the deadline to receive those. We received seven. That was McMillan, Patterson, Smith, Jumper Carter, Sease, Motor Architects, Mosley Architects, FW Architects, CPNL Architects, and Hoard, Coughlin, and Mop Architects. From there, we designed a two-phase approach for the evaluation. Phase one was to evaluate qualifications only, and phase two was a scripted presentation, which we invited the architect firms to present information to us based on a script that we provided them. The evaluator makeup was made up of two school principals, the current facilities director, one past facilities director, and a retired architect. Of course, then we jump to the next page, is August 1st was our phase one scoring. August 26th, we sent out invitations for our presentation. September 9th, we actually did our phase two scoring. And from there, FW Architects was identified as being the highest ranked offer of the ones who submitted. And of course, from there, we issued an intent to award, but that was under, it was a protestable type solicitation, so we had to wait the mandatory seven business days. And we executed a contract on October 7th, 2024, using the AIA B101 contract between owner and architect. And of course, we've identified some of the key deliverables and the bullied points in item six. Are there any questions from the board at this time before I introduce the architects for presentation?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Maybe two. In your evaluator makeup, who was the retired architect that you knew?
That was Joey Goforth, who was no longer in business. Yes, sir.
Now, in the selection process, I know y'all went through all of these steps that you have listed. What was the lowest bid?
Cost is not, cost is not an evaluated criteria in RFQ process. It's strictly qualifications.
That's all it is.
That's all it is. Nothing but qualifications. So, the criteria, I'll give you the breakdown of what the state in 1135-3220. I figured I'd get a question about this, so I brought it with me. So, the criteria set forth in the RFQ is past performance, the ability of professional personnel demonstrated ability and willingness to meet timelines and budget requirements, location and knowledge of and locality of the project, recent current projected workloads of the firm, creativity and insight related to the projects, related experience on similar projects, volume of work awarded by the district to the person or firm during the previous five years, with the objective of an equitable distribution of contracts by the district among qualified firms, including minority business enterprises certified by the state South Carolina Office of Minority Business Affairs, that has not had previous district work. And then, the last criteria is any other special qualifications required pursuant to the solicitation of the district.
So, this firm presented to you all their subcontractors, who they worked for, and did they meet all of those qualifications you just read out?
There's not a, it's not I say that you meet these requirements. This is not like a, like a SIL bid or an RSP where you have hard and fast requirements that you, if you don't meet these material requirements, you're being non-responsive. These are basically, the evaluation panel scored accordingly. So, if there's certain aspects that they were either classified as deficient or didn't meet at all, then they scored those responses accordingly.
Did they have any minority contracts that they listed? Do you remember that?
I don't, I don't remember that, because I said we're going back a year ago for this, but I could get any information, I'd be glad to get it to you.
I should have liked to know their percentage in terms of working with minority contracts and subcontract.
That won't be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, at this time, I'll introduce you to the members of FW Architect, Hal Fuller, and Mark Palmer. If you guys will come forward, they have a presentation ready for you at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we appreciate the opportunity to come speak with y'all today. I know your time is valuable, and so, we'll try and go through this as quickly as we can and try and answer any questions you may have as well afterwards. Again, I'm Hal Fuller, President of FW Architects, and Mark Palmer, who is the Vice President of the company, has been with us 14 years. 12 years now. I've been in the company since 91. The company actually started in 1967. My father started the company in 1967. I graduated Clemson, Mark graduated Clemson, and I came in shortly after that and became Vice President and have since become President. And again, Mark is Vice President. Let's see if I can do this, move this forward. As I've said, we did start in 1967. Our bread and butter is school construction, school design. Our first school that we did, actually, my father did, was South Florence High School at the time, built in 1973. Since that time, we've completed over 350 educational projects totaling greater than 7.5 million square feet of educational space. And as I said, 80% of our work represents, is represented by educational architecture. In talking about our team, our consultants, we're from Florence, South Carolina, so we're fairly close, an hour away. The people that you see here, that you can see on our slide, what you see is what you get. The people that are here today are the people that will carry you through the entire project. We're a small firm. We have eight people in our firm. We're not a large firm where one would start the design phase, someone would then take over construction drawing, someone else would come in and do construction administration. We work with you the entire way through the process. So, the person that's here today is the person that will hand over keys to you at the end of this project. And we see that as a positive, to have a smaller firm like that, that carries you entirely through that process, both from a coordination standpoint of drawing, but also just that relationship all the way through the project as well. Our design team, as you see in the bottoms of the slide, we've got consultants that work with us doing civil, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and structural. Urban engineering is out of Florence. The other one's mechanical design, ETI engineering, and Mabry engineering, structural, are out of Columbia. We've been working with them for about 30 to 40 years with mechanical design and Mabry engineering, ETI in the last five to eight years, urban engineering really since I can remember, before I even started with the company. So, we've got a long history of working with those consultants. They know the work that we need from them, and they know what we desire as well. So, we've always had a good working relationship. Now, we'll just go through some of the projects that we've done, just to quickly show you the work, type of work that we do.
Good evening, everyone. The first project shown is West Florence addition. It was a 40,000 square foot addition that was done in 2021, where Timmins, West Florence was adding the school of Timminsville to their student population. And so, they needed to add a wing to West Florence High School so that they could accommodate those students. And so, this occurred during COVID, so we had a lot of, there were some time issues, material issues, supply chain problems that we had to deal with, but we had to get them in that school by August of 2022. So, we were able to do a 32 classroom addition that we did as a CM at risk with Thompson-Turner, and we were able to complete that, the construction side, in eight months, while they still operated their location without closing down any parts of the school. The next project was a renovation in addition at Cross High School. And basically, we wanted to create an identity for Cross High School, the original building. There was a prison down the road then, and the school used actually the same materials to build the school. So, people were reminded that the school looked similar to the prison. So, part of our task was to create a new identity for the school, so it looked more like a school. So, we created the covered drop off on the front of the building to give it its own identity as a school. Hannah Hand Middle School, and this is also with Berkeley County, the same as Cross. This project is currently under construction, where they were demolishing part of the school and adding more classrooms to ultimately house 1,200 students. With the cafeteria and the, some of the classrooms remained, we tore down the front sections that were built in the 70s, and we are in the process now of finishing that school. And during that time, they had to move the entire school to modular buildings on another campus, so we helped with creating the modular plan for that campus, so that they were able to move the entire school while this construction is going on currently.
And on that project that Mark was just talking about, those modulators that we had, we had to build those, started in May of last, excuse me, of the year before, finished those in two months. It was about 65,000 square feet of modular space, owning existing elementary school site, had to move the middle school over to that site, and did that all in about two months, and had them open in August, so we could start our construction. This is Dale May. This is again, new construction that we did back in 2014. You can see that the cost per square foot was still low at that point. Once 2020 and COVID hit, those numbers started to skyrocket, and you'll start to see that as I show some of the other numbers as well. But $165 a square foot, that school was about 115,000 square feet at about $20 million that we built that for. That school today would be close to about $60 million if you look at the new numbers. Carolyn Lewis, K8, so it's a brand new school, kindergarten through eighth grade, 163,000 square feet. This is actually a prototype. We're building, we built that school there in Berkeley County. We are building two other schools that are prototypes right now of that school. And then, obviously, Hannah Hand is partial prototype that we looked at earlier as well. That school was completed in 2023, and you see the cost per square foot as it started to build up. That includes site work, everything. So, everything that you see there was under that $294 a square foot. What's interesting about these schools there in Berkeley County is all of your HVAC units are under the, basically, the attic of the gable roof system. So, there is a mechanical mezzanine that's underneath that gable roof. So, you have your two floors of school educational space, and then on top of that, basically, a third floor, which is your mechanical mezzanine that goes all the way around through that building, and everything is accessible from inside the building for the maintenance staff.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Why is that assessment pool there?
I'm sorry?
Why is that pool there?
That's actually a retention pond.
That's what I thought.
Yes, sir. We've got three retention ponds on that site because of just having to retain the water to meet the Department of Environmental Services, of what we have to, we have to keep that water on site and can't, and have to slowly take it out to either the wetlands or to the storm drain system of the county. So, they will not allow us to have any more water go off of that site than what was originally on that site pre-development. And so, that's what those ponds are for.
That's happening with most school or just happening in Low Country?
Most schools, just all the way through, over the state.
Industries, industries too.
Most businesses, most, so if you go by, say, a Walmart or something, you see a pond.
Yeah, we see that. But that's a dry good, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's a retention pond.
All right, thank you.
Sure. And these are just some interior shots. You know, kindergarten area has its own playground areas. We have a central courtyard with outdoor classrooms, which you can see in the lower right corner there, and so, all the classes can utilize that space. There's also a There's also a central pavilion that can be used by the staff and by students as well. This is Dillon Elementary School. We completed this one last year. This is the first new school that they've really built in a number of years in Dillon County. Twelve hundred students, a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. And again, the maximum capacity, right now, they've got a fourth and fifth grade wing that we've had done as an alternate. They did not have the money at the time to build that, but it's an alternate design they're trying to get money for to make that a seventeen hundred kindergarten through fifth grade class building. And then we've got athletic experience as well. So these are three of the stadiums that we've done in Florence, Florence School District One, and South Florence, West Florence, and Wilson. These were completed in twenty twenty-one. We completed those actually during COVID, and they were completed in ten months, all three. They do have synthetic turf fields, new field houses, new toilet concessions buildings. We've just completed the baseball softball fields that you see at each one of the schools as well. We did, we did three one year and then three the other year. So we kind of split those up into baseball softball designs and trying to work with their budgets as well. And then we've also done stadiums, two stadiums in Richland, too, excuse me, in Richland, one that we've done.
Question?
Yes, sir.
All schools now, especially high schools, are going to hard surface and not grace?
Not all of them. No, a lot of them are still going with natural turf that we found. They decided to, in Florence, to go with synthetic turf, and that's, that was their prerogative of what they were looking for. But there are still a lot of schools that don't necessarily want to go to synthetic, one, because of the cost, and two, they like the feel of a natural turf field. And so it's really up to the county and the schools how they want to handle that. But a lot of that is, comes down to cost.
Percentage cost? What'd you say, the natural?
Well, between natural and synthetic, synthetic's about a million dollars, about nine hundred thousand dollars to put a synthetic turf in where a natural field is a couple hundred thousand dollars that they would have to do, including your irrigation, your storm drainage and things. So that's the reason why a lot of schools are still going with the natural turf.
Thank you.
Sure. So that, just a quick synopsis of what we do. Mark's going to tell you a little bit of what we've done since that time in meeting with some of your staff.
Yeah, so we have gone out to Sherawah High School, and so we did review some of the areas of concern and issues at Sherawah. And we talked about the new gym building, and we also looked at the, looking at corridors, replacing the ceilings, brightening up some of the spaces, and also updating the restrooms around the lunchroom. And there are a couple of other group restrooms, and that same, those same things will be done at Central as well. And so we've already started in terms of assessing some of the existing facilities. And so our plan is to, along with Mr. Burr, visit the other schools to look at the needs, and then we can sit down with the administrators and prioritize the needs for the district as we start to do design work.
Any other questions?
What year did you all come up in?
I was, I was eighty-eight undergraduate, ninety-one graduate.
Okay.
And then I was ninety-six for undergraduate and two thousand and one for graduate.
Oh, good, thank you.
Your daughter's there, not just in case.
Just good, just good, just good.
One question. A lot of these newer buildings are two-story. What cost difference are you, like percentage or dollar per square foot is a single-story versus a two-story?
You may be, you're actually saving a little bit of cost just because it's all under one roof as opposed to having everything on one floor and then spreading that out square-footage-wise. And so you've got the economy of structure where it's all under that one area, and then the economy of roof structure as well because everything is more compact under that one roof area. You know, you're saving probably some from a site work standpoint as well because you're more compact on those sites as well from that standpoint. It also allows you, because of SC DOT now requires so much stack depth for these larger schools like this of your drop-off pickup areas, that we really need a lot of that for our drop-off pickup and the amount of stack space that we can get on-site. So it's, it's actually, those schools that we have there, they're under construction right now, and they're CM at risk. So it's, what they did is they have the architect, then they have the contractor that's working hand-in-hand basically with the architect at that time during the schematic phase, design development phase, and the construction drawing phase. And we're working together on those budgets as they go through. So if we see from the schematic phase that the pricing is starting to creep a little bit from what the owner was looking for, then we can work with, they work with us and we work with the design to try and keep that within budget there as well. So those schools are, each one of those is a hundred and sixty-three thousand square feet, about eighty-seven million dollars for that school. And that includes site work. There was a good bit of site work and off-site work that we had to do. On the one that I'm working on that will be finished next June, we had about seven million dollars just of off-site work. They required, DOT required us to put the roundabout in and pay for that, not us, but the district to pay for that as opposed to them. And so a lot of that cost was included in that. Also down, and it would not be as expensive here possibly, but down there, we ran into bad soils, and we had rigid inclusions that we had to do, which were basically piles that were put in around the entire foundation. Wherever we had foundation in that building, we had to every eight feet dig down, drill down, and put a caisson pile thirty-five feet down and fill it with concrete. So that's, there was a good bit of cost, two to three million dollars worth of cost in that alone. And then at the other school that we're doing in Nexton, we actually had to put earthquake drains in for about that same amount of cost. So those kind of things brought that cost up a little bit more than what it should have normally been.
For the most part, you'll enjoy a lot of sand here.
Yes, exactly. We were talking about that as we were coming up as well, you're right. Good for pine trees, but nothing else, not much else.
That's it. Any other questions?
Well, let me ask this last one.
Okay.
Twenty years ago, maybe twenty-five years ago, they told us that single floor was best. And you go upstate, all you see is two floors.
Right.
And I noticed in your presentation, you have a lot of two floors. So that's how you're going to plan to attack this?
Well, we don't know yet. I mean, I don't know if we'll, I'm sorry, if I can hear me. I don't know what all we'll be doing, you know, from a new construction standpoint, if there's a new school. Part of that comes from the amount of land that you've got and what we can put on that land and still have all of our stack space, your playground areas, your parking areas, and so we just have to look at that. And each school is different. Most of the schools, well, the schools that we've done in Florence, let's say, they're all one-story schools that we did. There are, they did build, we did not do it, but a two-story school because they didn't have a lot of land to try and work through. So it all really depends on the land that you got, the budget that you've got, and what we have to work with size-wise of the building.
Thank you.
No other questions? Thank you, guys. We appreciate you coming.
Look forward to working with y'all, too.
Yes, sir. Good. All right, Ms. Stubbs and Ms. Spring, you're back.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Ballinger, and members of the board. We would like to present some of our recent SC Ready and EOC data for you. This is last year's data that we just received several weeks ago. And so we just want to go through this data with you and then answer any questions and provide next steps with our data. All right, so we're first going to talk about our SC Ready data for grades three through eight. And just want everybody to know that our, kind of our North Star goal is that seventy-five percent of our students are performing at or above grade level and that all students are graduating college and career-ready. So that is the goal of the State Department, and of course, that is the goal in Chesterfield County, that at least seventy-five percent of our students are above, are at or above grade level. So Katie is going to go over our ELA grade level data from SC Ready, and you will see the notations at the end with the green arrows. So we're excited about that, and I will turn it over to Katie.
Hello again. We're going to start with ELA by grade level. As you can see, all of our grade levels, three through eight, had growth compared from twenty twenty-four to the end of last year. Later on, I'll show you how much growth, but it was good all across the board for ELA. We're very excited about that. This graph here shows you our trend data from twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five. As you can see, across grade bands, twenty twenty-five is the highest scores we've had out of our students. So we're very excited about that showing growth across the past four years. This chart compares third graders from each separate year, so your third graders in twenty-two compared to your third graders in twenty-three. The next graph I'm going to show you is our cohort data. So this tracks the same group of kids throughout their educational experience. So for instance, if you'll look at our fifth-grade cohort, that shows how they did in the green this past year. In yellow, that same group of kids, how they did in the fourth grade. And then in red, that same group of kids, how they did in the third grade. Are there any questions about any of that?
I'm going through it. I guess I can ask the question now. When you look at this trend here, can you produce demographics on this in terms of trend here? Can you produce demographics?
Yes, sir, I can do that for you.
Because I would like to see how they're doing sex-wise and race-wise?
Gender and race?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? I'm assuming, Mr. Sweeney, you want that for math as well?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the whole gamut, yeah. You know, the thought is, is that if a child is not reading by the third grade, there's issues that he, she has to deal with later on in school.
Yes, sir.
Related to dropout, related to discipline, and related to getting in trouble.
Absolutely.
So that's really, I want to see it as demographic because just looking at the data from twenty-two and twenty-three, when you start looking at those subgroups, you have ten and twelve and fifteen percent of students that are just pacing this, pacing these exams, and that's a large number. I mean, that's a small number.
Yes, sir.
That's a large number that's not meeting, you're seeing the expectation.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
So we just wanted to give a shout-out to our schools with some of the growth that you're seeing. And I'm not going to go through and read all of that, but you can see that the numbers are high, you know. Third grade, you see a thirty percent growth. Fourth grade, you're looking at thirty percent and twenty-one percent. Fifth grade sixteen, sixth grade sixteen percent growth, seventh grade twenty-one, and on up. So we just wanted to give a shout-out to those schools and those grade levels because the teachers, students, principals have worked really hard this last year and over the last several years. And we just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge all of the hard work that they have done.
When it lifts these grade levels, is that what grade they're currently in or what they completed last year?
That, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
That was the grade they were in at the end of twenty twenty-five, so in many.
Yes, that's correct. We also wanted to make sure that we are, you know, addressing anything as far as deficiencies or areas of growth. So some of the things that we are doing differently and will begin doing and continue probably through this year and even next year is really emphasizing small-group instruction, having I-Ready as a formative assessment to really drill down to the skills and the gaps in learning has been beneficial for our teachers. Changing up our intervention model so that we are impacting more students. We're going to continue with our professional development. Of course, we do have reading coaches, K through eight, which really is helpful because those coaches can provide ongoing embedded professional development throughout the school year. Last year, you may have remembered, we talked about giving our, giving summer reading books to all of our students district-wide. That was paid through Title I and Title V funds. We had a great summer reading camp that went really well, and we saw tremendous growth. We also used intercession to provide small-group instruction to students, and we will again do that this year. We will expand it in the fall. I think Dr. Ballinger has mentioned that to you, or will. And then continuing with monthly data meetings, not only at the school level, but at the district level as well.
That's all for ELA. Any questions before we move on to math? Okay. So this is the same chart that you saw for ELA, third through eighth grade. And you can see that our third graders, fourth graders, and sixth graders showed growth comparing twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Here you have our trend data for math, again, showing that third, fourth, and sixth grade has shown growth compared from twenty-four to twenty-five. And then we have the same chart with our cohort data, showing that same group of kids moving through their grade level.
Again, we have some wins across the district in terms of growth. You will see some significant numbers there in fourth grade with thirty-one percent, you know, fifteen and twelve and so on. So we do want to acknowledge the hard work at those schools and those grade levels as well. So what are we going to do to address those gaps or those deficiencies? One thing that we did, we started out the year with our principals developing a math action plan. I think you all know or are aware that we have a new curriculum. So we have had a lot of professional development with our new curriculum at the school level and at the district level, and we'll continue to have that professional development. We're going to continue to work on pacing guides. We've started some of those, but that is something that we need to continue and work toward. Explicit vocabulary instruction, especially in the areas of math and science, is critical to, for our students. We have some supplemental digital resources that are utilized at the schools and at home, and that's iExcel and I-Ready. We have two schools that have been named Palmetto Math Project Schools, which mean they will get a State Department math coach coming in. They also have some online tutoring resources at those schools as well. Targeted support during intercession, that will be coming up in October, and then continuing those monthly data meetings. So we do know there's work in math, and, you know, we want to make sure that we are giving our teachers and our students what they need to be successful in math. Any questions?
Yes, could you go back to the chart again? I'll make sure we read this back.
The cohort chart or the?
That one, yes. All right. Seventh, eighth, and ninth grade?
Yes.
Is that, just me looking, is that showing the down plan or?
Yes, sir. Now, the one that says nine GR twenty-five, those were our freshmen last year, their current sophomores. So they did not take SC Ready, but their data is still on there to show the previous three years of their SC Ready.
Is there anything, is there anything I can say to the downward?
Well, one of the things that we, we have discussed is that we didn't have a, you know, we lacked really a good curriculum. Um, of course, we did have a math curriculum, but oftentimes, teachers were pooling different resources to meet the needs of students. Um, now we have a curriculum that is the same, K through eight, with the same kind of strategies, the same language, um, the same procedures and protocols, and so we've gotten really good feedback about that curriculum. Um, the curriculum also matches the formative assessment that students take. So, um, so when they take that formative assessment and it says, okay, this, this student has a gap with fractions, um, then it will drill down to what the teacher can do, um, with those skills to make sure that that child does get what they need. So, um, well, I guess what I'm saying is we've got some things in place now to address these concerns because of that downward trend, um, that we were seeing in math. Um, this is not unique to Chesterfield County. Um, we, you know, it's, it's just statewide, um, that trending down in math, but, um, you know, our goal is to make sure that all of our students are, meets and exceeds by twenty thirty. Um, and so, um, that is what we are working toward.
And I know we fill our answer on, uh, COVID and some of the best, um, but if I'm just looking at the data and I'm not clenching brains, I'm trying to figure out my mind for an hour later, it looks like doing the COVID thing, the test score would actually higher than the other.
Um, and and what was interesting or not, but, you know, you know, a lot of, uh, everyone thought that ELA was going to drop significantly after COVID. Um, but what we found is that math has dropped significantly. So, um, we have work to do. Um, and and so I think that's really important that we have a curriculum that everybody has bought into, um, that teachers are excited about, and, um, and we can address it with the resources that we have now have in place.
Any other questions about math before we move on to science? Okay. So science is only tested at grades four and six in South Carolina, but as you can see from the chart, we grew in both of those. This is not compared to twenty-four data, however, it's compared to twenty twenty-three data because in twenty twenty-four, science was not a tested subject. So we kind of, when you look at the charts, you will have a gap there for twenty twenty-four, um, because of the shift in standards. They did not, um, test science that year. But there's the chart, um, small growth in science, but growth is growth.
Um, and again, and again, some of the things that we are doing district-wide, um, we have iExcel that is for, um, fourth grade and sixth grade for science. Um, we will be focusing on reading and writing across the content areas, and again, academic vocabulary. Um, that, that is a huge piece to this, um, for math and science is addressing the, the academic vocabulary.
And that is it for SC Ready unless you have any questions. We'll be moving on to EOC data. Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, alright, for EOC data, I did this a little bit differently. Um, we want to see our failures go down in every subject. So what I did is I put a green arrow to the left of all of the F scores that went down compared from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. And as you can see, we reduced the number of failures in Algebra, English Two, and U.S. History. Okay. Um, so for Algebra One, we're trending up in Chesterfield County, which is fantastic. Um, as you can see, I've got our Chesterfield County overall data to the left, and then each school is broken down to the right. For Biology, we've maintained, um, we had a slight dip from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, but we're still in the same range. Um, obviously, we will want to see that, um, improve going forward. English Two, district-wide, we're trending up. We had some good growth across a few of our schools. And then for U.S. History, uh, we did much better this year than we did in previous years. Any questions about any of those charts?
Chris.
Um, and so again, we want to, you know, acknowledge the hard work. Um, we've got some growth there. Um, you can see, uh, U.S. History, we, we saw significant growth there. Um, Algebra One, it chose to fill high and and so on, so we're, we're very proud about that and pleased with that. Um, and again, you know, what are we going to do district-wide to address, um, to address this? Um, and so again, a lot of the same things, math action plans, we've been working on those. Um, we have new curriculum district-wide in math, um, ongoing professional development. We'll be working, of course, to, uh, make sure we have those pacing guides for everyone. Um, one thing, and you'll see that in our, um, in the curriculum report, is, um, meetings at the high school and really tracking students to make sure that they are, um, on grade, on, um, on track to graduate and or college and career ready. Um, we will have Mastery Connect that we're going to be using to assist teachers with EOC test preparation, and then we will continue, um, our after-school tutoring at the high school, um, as well. And so again, want to leave you with our goal, and again, this is our goal district-wide, is that by twenty thirty, at least seventy percent of our students are performing at our above grade level and all students are graduating college and career ready.
That's the state goal too, isn't it?
That's the state goal too, yes.
Do, do all of our schools have both literacy and math coaches or is that?
No, um, K through eight, we all have. At the K through eight level, um, we have a reading coach at those school or an instructional coach, um, at the middle schools, um, but we do not have math coaches, um, across the board.
Anywhere?
Um, we have some isolated schools with a math coach. Um, Matty High School has a math coach. Um, we have three schools that have been identified as ATS I. That's because of their subgroups with special ed, and so we have Mr. Scott Edens, who was the principal at Sherrill Intermediate. He is serving as a math coach at three schools, um, and and we're using some of that ATS I money, um, to pay for him. Um, but he is working at Edwards, Pageland, and Sherrill Intermediate. Um, but he's stretched across three schools.
Uh, do we test all students' elder tests or just students that are required?
All students.
All students are required to test. They are.
They're tested.
Yes, sir.
Let me switch the subject for a second, and maybe I should ask you this during the curriculum, but is AI part of our school curriculum now? Are, are we doing AI in our schools now?
So there are, and Karen Eller will be making it to that, but I think there is, there is some training for teachers, um, on AI and how it can be used in a, in an effective and, um, at, you know, at certain levels. Um, and I think that would be probably my, the best answer. Is that correct, Karen?
So, so the training is going on, but it's not a part of our curriculum yet?
Um, so Karen just said Sherrill High is going to be our pilot, pilot school for, um, doing that AI, um, at, at a class, um, so that, you know, um, students can get the opportunity to, to use that and to know how it should be used appropriately.
And, and Mr. Sweeney, there also needs to be some policy guidance, um, concerning AI and how it's used, um, when it, when it comes to, uh, just within our classrooms and and when it's, when it's applicable and when it's not. Um, so there's some other things that we have to look at from the district level concerning AI usage. Um, now to answer your question, is it being used? It's probably being used quite often. Um, you know, as a part of, are we using it effectively and part of a teaching tool? We're not there yet, I can tell you that. Um, and that's something that we need to grow on.
Let me ask you a question, since you've been in two states. Your state, your, your state assessment test similar to South Carolina, where you've been?
Are they similar?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I think it would depend upon, um, and I guess I need to ask this question. South Carolina, a common core state? I know, okay, so it's not, so, no, they're probably a little different based upon the standards that are set, but I mean, they're, they're probably very similar in, in most cases.
You, your percentage rate in your district similar to the percentage rate here?
Um, now.
I mean, I'm, I'm just saying.
Yeah, so, so in, in Virginia, it was a little different as far as the accreditation was based upon a percentage pass rate. So schools had to hit seventy percent in order to be accredited. And if you did not hit that mark, then your school was designated as,
Needing help?
Uh, you know, accredited with conditions, um, or something of that nature. And so you had that percentage that you had to hit every year, um, there. Now Oklahoma, that was a little bit different, um, as far as they didn't look at percentages like Virginia did to hit. It's more kind of like what, how South Carolina is set up. Um, you know, you wanted to get certain students, you know, you wanted to have those buckets and you wanted to hit those buckets. Um, so. But we see some growth, we see some movement, and I can tell you that from just being here for two months, um, and, and some of the things that, that we are doing, have done, will help move that needle. And as you can see, it's helped move the needle, uh, when it comes to instruction. The thing is, we need to get the other resources in place so that we can continue to, to make those gains and make that movement, uh, going forward. And I think that's going to be some of our conversation that when we get into budget season on how we make that happen.
I just, those children, those students that are not meeting these expectations, I just want to make sure that they're in some type of career track, whether it's technical, uh, vocation or something. They just don't need to graduate school with a diploma and don't have some type of career track that they could go into that.
I would agree.
So that's my, that's my concern.
Can I just have one, uh, the closing question? Uh, Mr. Edens, he's at the old math, um,
Math coach.
And what's going to be working here?
Um, so Mr. Edens is at, um, Pageland Elementary, Sherrill Intermediate, and Edwards Elementary. Um, and then there is a math coach at, um, Matty High School. I think I've got it. I think I've listed everybody.
And are we getting a math coach at New Heights and Long from the state or?
The math coach at New Heights and Long is a coach provided by the State Department. Um, so she will be in that school, and I think her plan is to be once a week. Um, so she, she actually lives in Darlington, and the state has provided her, um, to come to our, our district, but it was, um, based on, um, scores, um, from those two schools in the past, and so that's the reason that they've been designated as Halmetta Math Project Schools, which means they do have a, a math coach coming in. I think that's one day a week for them.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and do.
Jump up and down, go ahead.
Alright, um, I think you've got a copy of the curriculum report, and I'm just going to highlight just a couple of things because many of these items we did go over, um, in the presentation. Um, so with CTE, just want to, uh, acknowledge that fifty students with interest in cybersecurity, information technology, computer science, or ethical hacking participated in the Pink Bus Cyber Watchdog Event, um, which was funded by ETV and Public Radio. Um, and so this allows students to see, uh, uh, different career paths that were, um, that they might could go into, um, and what were the skills needed for those careers. Just like I talked about, or Katie and I talked about in the presentation, principals and administrators have been looking closely at our SC Ready data, um, creating action plans, um, specific for their schools. Um, even though we have an action plan at the district, each school, um, is going to have a different take on that, and so, um, they are creating those action plans. The exceptional education department, um, hosted a professional development for all of our principals on August eleventh, um, and the presenter, um, talked to the, um, principals, um, about ways to strengthen special ed practices and compliance and provided strategies to our principals, um, at that training. The twenty-five, twenty-six induction cohort of new teachers met on the nineteenth of August, um, and representatives from the curriculum team, um, came and, um, talked to the teachers, um, about making connections, community, and colleagues. Um, and then lastly, um, just wanted to, to mention again, um, that CTE, Special Ed, Federal Programs and Curriculum, um, partnered with Ms. Bruni, our Coordinator of Accountability, um, and we had, um, meetings at each of the high schools to really look at our students that are on track, um, to graduate and, um, and make sure that, that those students are going to be successful, um, in high school. Um, some of the things that we focused on in those meetings are discipline, attendance, academic performance test scores, college and career readiness indicators, CTE data, um, and other, um, relevant data to the meetings. Um, so, um, that, that has already been concluded this, this first nine weeks, and we will again, um, have a, a second set of meetings, um, next nine weeks and throughout the rest of the year. Are there any questions from the curriculum report?
Questions? Thank you, Ms. Stubbs.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Caskey, financial report.
Madam Chair, Dr. Ballinger, members of the board, good evening. Proud of this evening. You all received a copy of the financial review for the month of July. Are there any questions related to that report?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I asked Chair if she wanted to do that one.
Yeah, well. Mr. King, you got the big one. Dot King, sorry. Where's all your pages, ma'am? Where's all your pages?
So.
Yeah, I promise.
And before Dr. King. Yeah. You go ahead.
And before Dr. King gets started, this is part of, you know, we, we said that we would discuss our discipline report each month. Um, this would be the first report of the year, so this is the October report. Um, you know, that was coming from when, when we were looking at uniforms at, at elementary, at our middle schools, and so this is the first presentation of our data. Uh, Dr. King and I did discuss, um, earlier today about maybe, um, changing up the data to where it's not as, uh, has as much information on it, where we can make it a little easier to read, um, for everybody, because I know for me, I was looking through, I was like, hey, we could take some of this stuff out. It's just too much info on there. Let's, let's break that down for, um, our constituents to be able to see it. So, um, but without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dr. King.
Yes, sir. So, uh, good evening, uh, Dr. Ballinger, Madam Chair, and the members of the board. Um, I would like to go over the discipline data for the month of August. Um, I am presenting this data to share an overview of discipline trends, um, throughout our district and within our grade levels. The goal for this presentation, like Dr. Ballinger had mentioned earlier, um, is to present findings every month, um, to help improve student outcomes and school climate. Um, if we can identify the trends in the data, we should be able to provide proper support at every level within our school system. So the document that was shared with you all, which is fairly long, the more information I give you, the less questions I hope I get. Um, so, but, but the document that was shared, um, it is going to be cleaned up, like Dr. Ballinger mentioned, um, for our monthly presentation, just to make it easier to follow and easier to understand going forward. Um, so since we put in the new dress code updates in our handbooks, we are also looking at the data closer regarding dress code violations. Um, so keep in mind that the data shared for the month of August will be our baseline for the months to follow. Um, so our principals have been tasked with making sure that they are setting a tone regarding student discipline. So we're going to start at the high school. So our top five infractions for the high school, uh, which is no surprise, our, uh, eighteen point three percent of our discipline infraction, our infractions came from cellphone violations. our, uh, eighteen point three percent of our discipline infract- or infractions came from cellphone violations. Um, eleven percent of our infractions came from dress code. Uh, ten point eight percent, uh, came from truancy. Uh, five point six percent came from cutting class, and five point six percent also came from disrespect. Um, so that totaled, those five infractions totaled fifty-one percent of our incidents reported in power school for our high schools. So, for our middle school top five infractions, uh, twenty-six point four percent, uh, was inappropriate behavior. Uh, twelve point three percent was disrupting class. Eight point five percent was inappropriate language. Eight point five percent accounted for dis- was disrespect, and truancy counted for eight point one percent. At the middle school level, and at the elementary level, hit, kick, push, accounted for twenty-nine point seven percent of the discipline. Inappropriate behavior was sixteen point eight percent. Uh, truancy was eleven point six percent. Bust violations were ten point three percent, and defiance was six point nine percent. And that gave a total of, at the elementary level, those five infractions accounted for seventy-five percent of the incidents reported in power school at the elementary level. And district-wide, our top five infractions was inappropriate behavior, that came at eleven point seven percent, excuse me. Phone violations, which came up to ten point two percent. Truancy, nine point nine percent. Hit, kick, push was eight point two percent, and disrupting class was six point four percent, which totaled forty-six point three percent of the incidents reported in power school district-wide were those five infractions. So, we continue to remain committed to safe and supportive learning environments. So, I did want to make a special note, I know one of the concerns was the discipline piece or the dress code violations for the middle school level. And if you look in your report, everyone about middle schools, they did not have a single dress code infraction for the month of August. Um, and so, but, a lot of this stuff, these, these things, it's not, it's not any shockers right now, especially with the cellphone piece, with the new cellphone policy. Um, so, we have to get, we're getting that under control, um, at the different levels, well, at the high school level. And just making sure that we have supports in place for our staff members to address the others. So, any questions regarding the discipline report?
Uh, I got a couple.
Yes, sir.
Um, at our elementary school, when you say suspension, out of school, no service, what do you mean?
Well, if they're suspended, oh, OSS, out of school, we're not required to provide services. So, that's why it says out, uh, out of school suspension, no services. If they're under suspension, we're not required to provide services.
Uh, so, when you say suspension, what are you talking about? Five to ten days, or?
It just depends on the infraction. Our discipline is progressive, and it's based on the category. So, for instance, if it's a category one offense, it, 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 um, it progresses. So, the first offense may be a conference, second offense may be a day of ISS, third offense may be OSS. It just depends on the infraction and what category that fraction falls in.
So, I'm looking at primary schools, and you have twelve, fourteen, nine in primary schools, which is first, second, and third grade. Well, maybe not third grade, but first second, kindergarten, first second. That's out of school with no service. Surely, we got some kind of stopgap in there to assist those kids. I mean, what kind, I mean, this is setting up a trend for dropout.
It could, but you have to look at the infraction itself. So, if we're going by the policy and going by the handbook, then certain infractions do require OSS regardless of the age.
And this is, but because we have a zero tolerance policy.
Well, we don't have zero tolerance policy for anything, really, not in our policy. We don't have zero tolerance, except for bullying. But with the exception of, you know, with our fight initiative, that's not a zero tolerance policy because we have the checklist to define whether or not it was a mutual fight or whether it was a, an individual assault or what have you. But, but when you're talking about that particular, that particular grade band, like kindergarten through second grade, we don't want to set them up, we try to keep them at school because we're realizing that they're not used to school. So, we do have things in place, so when you see an OSS for a kindergartner or a first grader, just know that, that a lot has been done before it gets to that particular point. Because the principals do a great job in working with those kids before it gets to that point. But once it gets to that point, sometimes that's, that's the only other option that you have. It's kind of give them a reset, and we don't put them out forever. Sometimes they need a reset at home for a day or two, and then they come back and get re-acclimated. So, it just depends on the infraction.
Man, I'm telling. Uh, what's Plainview doing? I know they have a small school, but they didn't have no infraction. So, what are they doing there better than the rest of them?
I was looking for Mr. McDaniel, but I think he stepped out, so that, that's a good question. Um, but I, I'm not, and I don't, I'm not certain whether or not that is something that may have not been entered, but at the time when we ran the report, they didn't have anything in power school. So, that's something that we're checking up on.
And Mr. Swainey, just so you know, a lot of times with elementary, especially young students, you know, usually you're looking at a one day, sometimes you will get up to a two or three. But as Dr. King mentioned, it is progressive. So, that's, a lot of times when you get to that suspension, this is probably the, the fifth time that they've had to deal with this student on a, on, on a similar infraction that they've tried multiple things to work through with, with the child, with the parent, with the teacher, to put other supports in place. And, and sometimes, you know, this is the, the next step, so.
And I would also like to include, sometimes by law, if you remove a child from the educational setting, if you say, well, little Johnny had a bad day, so we want you to take him home for the rest of the day, or he returned the next day, you still have to code that as an OSS day because that is a day without service. So, that plays into the data as well.
Again.
Yes, sir? Yes, sir?
Yeah, Dr. King, uh, sorry, I read, um, some schools, some, the management of that. And I, I'm, I'm just looking back there, and I don't even remember the name of the school.
Sure.
But I saw that we have a child OSS reported.
OSS for tardy?
Uh, I see what's that, it's reported. And like I said, I don't, I, I can look back, but it's not important for the school. As, as we were looking at it earlier, it's about beginning to channel quality education. And I realize we're dealing with emotional, which, uh, especially if you're talking at your primary and elementary, uh, to your middle school. I still believe the best person to help learn is in school or in classroom.
One hundred percent.
And at that particular age, then obviously, a lot of times I think they're working off emotions. And sometimes they make bad decisions because of it, but maybe, uh, we need to revisit their policy handbook of really look at whether some of the other, or currently, even the OSS, especially with my knowledge of that. And, uh, I noticed, uh, quite a few were inappropriate acts. Obviously, I don't know what they were, maybe the acting was something that you had no other choice. But I'm like, this is funny, when you're talking elementary and primary. We have public actions, it might be a little difficult to do with that.
Absolutely. But what we are seeing, just in FYI, what we're seeing, and I, and I got some elementary or primary principals here that can kind of speak up on that, but I don't want them to do that tonight, but they probably could. Some of the things that they are seeing in the schools, we're seeing behaviors that we haven't seen before. Um, and that's why, you know, we are really looking at ways that we can help our kids because that's basically, it's about the kids. Um, and so, but there are some things that we're seeing that the kids are exhibiting that we haven't seen before. And so, that's why we are requiring, you know, we're, we're trying to look at behavioral therapists coming in and helping to work because our teachers are not trained on how to deal with certain behaviors. Um, and so, and a lot of times, sometimes kids have to go home for a reset just to give us time to get stuff in place for them so that they can be successful, so. No, you're fine.
I also know that, um, sometimes the child and bond.
Absolutely.
For that change to be made, or even that corrected learning.
Yes, sir.
So, and, and I, I agree here, I'm saying let's begin to look at school on the board or school, like, as a community.
Mm-hmm.
To figure out ways that we keep children in the best, safest environment.
Absolutely, and I, I do believe in that village mentality, that village approach. I know a lot of schools have become proactive in, in getting like some, some groups coming in or some mentorship groups coming in, mentoring those kids with some of those behaviors. So, we're trying to get creative, but a lot of the things that we want to do, it, it costs to do. You know, it, it's, it's a huge cost to certain things, um, but we're trying everything that we can. But I do believe that it takes a village, and you got the community approach. We got a lot of great people in our communities that can come in and volunteer and do things. And, and one mentor can change the trajectory of, of a bunch of kids. Um, but it, I think it takes us all, but we can't put all of the emphasis on the teachers to do it all because they have a lot to do already, so. Yes, sir.
Are we putting these parents in and talking to them at all?
Every single day, every chance we can get.
That these parents have given these administrators? I mean, what, what kind of reactions do they give you?
We're live, so I can't say. I'm, I'm joking, but, but I, you.
There's got to be some responsibility there for this.
You, you're absolutely right, and the, the hard part, and I know the principals can attest to it, is every, and I believe that every parent, I was, I'm, I'm gonna say it with this. I believe every parent gives us the best that they have every day. Um, but I do know sometimes it's, it's hard to tell a parent that their child is misbehaving when they don't believe that their child is misbehaving. Um, and a lot of times, and that's, that's just a nice way to put it. But sometimes you would be surprised at some of the conversations that are held, especially in my role as the, um, hearing officer, some of the conversations that I have on a weekly basis with some parents is shocking. Um, but it's not all, but certain, like, going back to the point you made earlier, um, Dr. Chapman, about the environment. It's like you, you can take a, 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 a fish out of a, a dirty pond and clean them up or whatever, and put them back in that same pond, they're gonna get dirty again. Um, so you have to change the environment, um, of the child, and that, but that takes, that takes a lot. So, we're working on some support services and wraparound services that we can give our kids to help. You know, so, but that's what we're doing.
I want to point out something that I think was kind of a concern when we first started talking about the changing uniforms and, and how discipline and stuff like that. So, I just picked out three middle schools and.
Sure.
Did a very rough tabulation of, of instances, and I think it comes back to, I, I don't feel like, New Heights has three hundred and forty-seven reported incidents. Chesfield Ruby had one oh four, and Long had forty-five. I don't believe that the kids at New Heights are three hu- I, I think that maybe things are getting reported properly in some places and not properly in other places. I, I don't want to point fingers, but I, I certainly don't believe that, you know, do we need to do some coaching along the way of what definitely needs to be reported, what doesn't? And, and I, I'm not saying sweeping anything under the rug or, or whatever, but it, those numbers, it, it's, are we always reporting it properly?
Yes, sir. And that, that can be answered in a multitude of ways. Um, but what we are trying to do and we're working towards and working with our administrators in is make sure that you're reporting what needs to be reported and putting in everything. But, you know, like I said, all administrators were challenged with, with being tough on discipline and entering discipline. And, and sometimes it, it depends on the environment, it depends on the, uh, the atmosphere, it depends on the classroom, it depends on supervision. It's a lot of moving pieces that can dictate or determine what write-ups are, or what kids are getting written up or what, you know, what is taking place. So, I think student engagement plays a huge part in de-escalating or doing away with discipline issues in the classroom. So, it's, it's a lot that, that we have to do as, as a district or as teachers and as administrators to ensure that all that is happening so that our kids have the best opportunity. So, we'll look at that, and like I said, and keep in mind, this is baseline. So, this is the first that we pulled it like this, so maybe next month you will see a difference. It's just, we just pulled it for the first time, so we'll look at that, and we have those discussions with our principals as well.
And we do have that meeting, um, tomorrow, or Wednesday, with our principals to discuss this data and discuss how that is being entered again, which we did discuss that at the, uh, first principals meeting to make sure that all data was being entered appropriately. Um, and so, we, we will touch, touch base again.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. King.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll see you again.
Yes, you will.
All right, our superintendent's report.
Making sure that green button's on, Mr. Swainey.
Good.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I would like to take some time and recognize our, our school counselors. As you're aware, we have experienced heartfelt loss across our school communities this year. Our counselors have been there for our students and staff. They have been there to help through the grieving process and provide other supports as needed. I want to just say thank you to our counselors for providing the care and attention needed at each of our sites. Um, and for those that are, that are also traveling from sites and, and coming to support in other schools. So, um, it's just, you know, I've been really impressed with our school counselors and, and what they're doing, in the, in these tough times. So, I just want to say thank you and recognize our school counselors for what they have been doing for our, for our staff and for our students. Also, just wanted to make note, the architects, the, as they mentioned, they, they've started visiting sites um, to look at the design phase. Also, Dr. Hill is chairing a committee, um, to advertise the bond referendum. I know she's been working, um, on that. We're going to hopefully have some things out here within the next week or so, um, on our website and, um, through out media outlets concerning the bond referendum and information. I also wanted to let you know that October first is the end of the first nine weeks. And then intercession will be held October sixth through the tenth. Uh, Monday and Tuesday will be, uh, focused on seat time recovery at the high schools. Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday will provide high-impact opportunity in critical skill development in reading, writing, and math for our K through eight students. This is a little bit changed from last year. Last year in the fall, it was sixth grade, and then in the spring, they focused on third grade. We're doing all K through eight. Um, we'll do that in the fall and the spring. Intercession will run from eight o'clock to twelve o'clock, twelve o'clock, Monday through Wednesday. Bus services will be available at centralized locations, uh, throughout the district. And then we will provide breakfast and lunch, uh, during intercession. And that is my report.
Thank you, any questions? Okay, Ms. Kutchin, personnel exhibit.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Ballinger, good evening.
Good evening.
I recommend for your approval Personnel Exhibits A through E.
So, move.
All those in favor? Right side.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, Dr. King, you're back.
I'm back. At this time, um, I would like to present the following, uh, policy rule, J I C A R, student dress for a recommended second reading and approval.
Okay, all those in favor?
Gotta have a motion first.
Oh, I need a motion for second reading on J I C A dash R.
Let's move.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
No.
Okay.
All right. So, now I would like to present the following policy revisions for a recommended first reading. Revision to policy B D E, board committees. Um, this particular standing, standing committee, the board will have two standing committees, which will be the finance committee and the facilities committee. The board should review the financial and facility status of the district on an as-needed basis. These committees will assist with this process.
Need a motion for first reading for B D E? All those in favor? Right side. All right.
All right. So, now we have the revision to policy G L C E, unencumbered time for school nurses. Back in twenty twenty-three, we had to create a policy G C L E, unencumbered time for full-time instructional staff, teaching in grades K through five, and to instructional staff of any elementary, middle, or high school responsible for teaching a special education class for more than twenty percent of the school day. education class for more than twenty percent of the school day with students who are removed from the general education setting. This update now includes school nurses.
Need a motion to pass policy G D L E.
So move.
All those in favor?
No.
All right.
All right. Next, we have the revision to policy K B E, Parent Organizations. So the board authorizes the formation of cooperative parent-school groups that enhance the district's educational program, including but not limited to booster clubs, parent-teacher organizations, parent-support groups, business school partnerships, and educational foundations. Parent organizations desiring to use the name of the district or the school to organize, fundraise, or advertise must obtain the approval of the board as a prerequisite. Continued use of the school's name, logo, mascot, et cetera, is contingent upon compliance with all applicable board policies and regulations. The district will obtain a name-based criminal record history check for sled on all financial officers upon receipt of a parent organization's registration. The result of the name-based check will be presented to the board for review. The board will notify the organization that its financial officer is prohibited from serving in that role if the name-based check reveals that the financial officer was convicted of or pled guilty to or no low contender to a felony, theft, forgery, embezzlement, fraud, or financial crimes involving the use of a financial transaction card. The cost for the background checks will be paid by the district.
Need a motion to pass policy first reading K B E.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Uh.
Like sign. Okay.
All right. So next, I would like to present the following policy rule revisions for the recommended first reading. This is policy A R B D E R, which, uh, is for board committees. This rule outlines both the Finance Committee and the Facilities Committee duties.
Okay, need a motion for policy A B R E R.
Uh-huh.
Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, keep this up now.
Try to talk as fast as I can. All right, so the next one is A R G C L E R, which is the rule that outlines the procedures for unencumbered time to include school nurses and reduction or withholding of time to include school nurses.
Okay. All those in favor?
All right, last one. I would like to present the following new policy for the recommended first reading, policy B E A, which is live stream of board meetings. So this is gonna take a little time. Even though this is a practice that we have done for many years now, the state is requiring that we have it in policy. All regular meetings, work sessions, budget workshops, budget hearings, committee meetings, subcommittee meetings, special call meetings, and public hearing of, meetings of the board, except for lawfully convened executive sessions, will be live streamed and recorded for public access. The meeting will be held in a location with sufficient access to quality audio and video equipment. In the event of an interruption of the live stream during a meeting, the board will make reasonable efforts to restore live stream access. If live stream access cannot be restored, the board will make a clear audio and video recording accessible on the district's website within seven days after the meeting, except for executive sessions held in accordance with state law. In the event that the district has limited or no broadband access, it may request a twelve-month extension to comply with the live stream requirements. The request must be submitted to the South Carolina Board of Education's Policy and Legislative Committee, along with proof that reasonable efforts were made to meet the requirements. Policy violations or instances of noncompliance may result in penalties that escalate based on the frequency, duration, and severity of the offense. The first violation may result in the board receiving guidance from the South Carolina Department of Education. Subsequent violations will result in the South Carolina Department of Education issuing a warning, and the district may be required to submit a written plan outlining how it will achieve compliance. If noncompliance persists, the district may be referred to the State Board of Education, which can impose additional penalties of up to one percent of the district's state funding.
Okay, need a motion for?
So move.
B, B E A, okay. All those in favor?
I'd like to ask a question before.
Okay.
Uh, we haven't had any problem with our, uh, video circulation since we've been doing it ever. I didn't think so. Okay.
Yeah, and like I said, we are, we're already doing this, this has to be in policy.
I just wanted to know, has, has it been clear?
Yes, sir.
Have we had any problems since we've been doing it?
Not too much.
Okay, all those in favor?
Uh.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Caskey, update supplemental pay schedule.
Yes, so we wanna recommend approval for an update to our district athletic supplemental schedule, which would add a supplement for our high school weightlifting coaches.
Yeah, but believe you had that listing in your packet this time.
Yes.
I need a motion.
So move. I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Uh.
Like sign. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, my turn. First Steps Board of Directors' appointment, represent, need to recommend approval. See, I loaded me here for that. Okay. All right, I need approval to recommend someone for the First Steps Board. I don't have a person. You got a person?
So move. And who we recommend?
Pardon me?
Isn't that the one?
First Steps.
Yeah.
You're serving on it. Dr. Ballinger will be on it. Recommend approval for that.
So move.
All those in favor? All right, Risky Business Seminar is October the eighth through the tenth for Hilton Head. Uh, at Hilton Head, you need to sign up with Becky if you're going. And then December the sixth through seventh, the SCASPA Legislative Advocacy Conference in Charleston, and that will be, um, I need a delegate who's going. Uh, I've got to name a delegate and an alternate, so.
What's the deadline on it?
Um, October, okay. Yeah, and this is, um, I've got to have this in by Wednesday, November twelfth. Y'all wanna think about that, who's going. October thirteenth is our next board meeting, right here at Palmetto Learning Center, five o'clock, executive session, five thirty, meeting. Anything else? I need a motion.
So move.
All right, all those in favor?
Uh.
Goodbye.